Didn't go on a mat, oh, it did start now, it looks like. Um, okay, we're live, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order, welcome everyone to the Bogota Board of Education regular virtual meeting, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. We ask everybody to please stand and forgive my chiming cock. The flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey, excuse me, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
President.
Mrs. Cole?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Miranda?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Racket?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Here.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Present.
We have the call.
Thank you. Also present are Mr. Kennedy Superintendent, Nathania Simon Esquire, Elsie Luca, Student Congress Representative, Mr. Ebsil, excuse me, Business Administrator and Board Secretary, Elizabeth Rua's Assistant Board Secretary. If I now may have a motion for hearing on the citizens, this is on agenda items only, please. Are there any other comments, we'll be towards the end of the meeting. So, motion please. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second was B C, I believe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, if we have any citizens' comments, on agenda items only, please. I don't see any hands, do you?
I see Connie.
Connie? I have no hands up on.
Connie had her hand up.
Okay, I don't see it, okay.
Good evening. You can hear me, right?
Yes, Connie.
Good, thank you. My questions are all actually the same for two twenty-three, twenty-one, oh, one, two, actually, two oh-four. I see all these wonderful grants, thank you, whoever is doing them. Do we have estimates on how much we're receiving? Is there, is there, like, you know, you, you, you get a pot if you, if you are awarded the money?
Yes, these are more smaller grants for small, smaller projects that we're doing. To give you, I think I do have it from my last meeting. The first couple of grants are the library grants. One of them is just to get books. Another one we ran last summer was like three or four thousand dollars just to help pay teachers to run summer programs. So, these are some of the smaller grants that we just try to apply for as many as we can.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I don't think I had anything else. Nope, that would be it, thank you.
All right, take care. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else coming forward.
No.
Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to close citizens' comments, please?
There, there's a question in the chat.
Second, Miranda.
Oh, wait, there's a question in the chat.
Yeah, I was going to ask, are we accepting questions from the chat room at this time?
Yes, chat room, the chat room, yes.
But this isn't.
But it's not an agenda item.
It's not an agenda item, so we'll need to answer that towards the end. Let's all, let's try to remember that, please.
Kathy, motion, Lisa?
Thank you, second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, motion to close citizens' comments.
Motion to close.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, okay, we're good. We can now move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, this might even answer some questions, but first, we are walking in addendum tonight that was posted on the website already, and that's a wording of the solar, solar power agreement. In essence, next meeting, we're going to have the architect and Honeywell, and it's all tied into our ESIP program that we're going to be talking about next meeting. But at the end of the days, over fifteen years, we should save over eight hundred thousand dollars by making this agreement tonight, by going solar. What it usually is, is the company owns it, and then we buy it at a lower percentage, and we can use that money for other different things. Also, we, we had all three buildings open back up this week. Obviously, we had to close Bixby because of cases. I know some parents are getting itchy. We are, we are going to be bringing back the preschool starting March first and combining cohorts. A survey should be going out tomorrow or Thursday night to get a, a sense of how many parents are still going to keep kids home if we combine cohorts. One thing that we could definitely start doing is, is adding an extra day, so that Wednesday, instead of being all virtual, we can bring kids back. So cohort one can go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one week, and the following week cohort two can go Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Again, this is all based on our numbers. We are still in the red, I mean, the orange. We are coming down, our numbers are coming down, and I'm hoping that we're in the yellow very soon, and I think we're going to be able to open up a lot more. Teachers are starting to get online for the vaccine process. So, I think that's going to make a lot more people comfortable too, but we are heading in that direction, and I'm hoping that that happens soon. But our first test is going to be bringing back the preschool cohorts together. So, that's where we are with opening up schools a little bit more. So, we are hoping that's going to happen soon. But again, we haven't gone a full month without keeping all three buildings open because of COVID cases going on, so that's a concern as well. So, I would like to get through a couple of weeks before we push a lot more kids back in. I just also wanted to give a COPS grant update of the things that have been going on. So, over the last couple of weeks, the window film has been installed in all three buildings. That's all the ground level on the first floor. That's going to help with the windows. If there's gunfire or someone trying to smash it, i- it's not going to stop everything, but it's going to be a major deterrent to someone. They're not going to be able to shatter the windows anymore if they want to get in through a window or something like that. Also, the visitor software has been delivered, so we're going to be able to do background checks when visitors come to buildings for our visitor screening. Obviously, right now with COVID, there is no visitors coming to buildings, so we haven't been able to, to start doing that. Also, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be installing over a hundred and twenty cameras in all three buildings. So, any dead spot is now going to be on a camera, and we're going to be able to view that at all times as well. Two-way radios have been ordered, and we are just waiting on delivery. We're getting forty-two, one, forty-one radios that we will be able to tie into the police station with the class-three officers to have immediate response if anything is needed. Also, thirty-six new doors in the high school are being finalized. We're going to be sending that out to the manufacturer very soon, so that can start being made. And then also, we are rekeying the district, so that's been settled, and that's been sent, and that's going out to, to manufacture. So, this was all part of the COPS grant that we got awarded in the beginning of the year, so we're starting to see all these projects get put into place. Also, last week, the governor allowed fans to start attending in-person games. Two caregivers per house were allowing to come to home games. That is middle school and high school events in our buildings. So, anyone that would like to attend to see their child play right now, they will have that opportunity. There's only another two weeks left in this season, I believe it's over in the second week in March or for first week, but I know some parents have been able to get to some games today that I've seen. Also, and last but not least, we're still waiting on word on standardized testing. Last week, the governor announced that they were applying for the waiver to not test the students this year because of all the stress they're under already. But we, we heard word from the federal government yesterday that the, the federal government might not be doing that. So, we're now waiting to hear what is next. All testing has been put on hold right now until later date, but we're waiting to see what the, the Department of Ed is going to tell us how to proceed moving forward, because I think putting the students right now to test in this environment with their mental health, they've got a lot of things going on right now, and the, and a standardized test right now is not something extra that they need in their lives. But if we have to test, we have to test, but we are again waiting to see what the government, the D O E says we have to do, and that's what we'll do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the minutes, we have the minutes of January fifth, the reg meeting, open and closed. January twelfth, work session action meetings, both open and closed, and January ninth, regular meeting, open. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Miranda.
Okay, Frank and second Adalia, thank you. Just as a note, on the January nineteenth minutes that you received home, you know, to proof for voting on this evening, there were two minor corrections made in the office. Under old business, there was a, the date said February seventh for when Matt Lee was coming to join us, and that was corrected to Matt ninth, excuse me, February ninth. And under literally the last sentence, the word for was just corrected to be the word the, so nothing that impacted anything of significance in the minutes. So, we will approve remat one as amended. Did anybody else have any questions or concerns in the minutes? If not, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Who's that?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. In education, items two twenty-three, twenty-one, oh, one through two twenty-three, twenty-one, oh, eight. If you would just note that there were two new items added to number five. So, it is in the consent agenda, but those were revised slightly. There was two additional professional conferences added in there. So, may I have a motion on items one through eight, please? Motion, Lisa.
Motion, Adalia.
Thank you, Lisa. Second, Adalia. Any discussion? Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Two twenty-three, twenty-one, oh, nine, which is a new item from since last week. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Ortega.
John, second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? No, all right, Ervin, would you call the roll on that one, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On personnel, items two twenty-three, twenty-one, ten through two twenty-three, twenty-one, twelve. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Miranda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Kathy, I'd just like to thank Mrs. Kornola for her time.
Yes. Yes, very much.
For retirement.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
I would also like to thank Mrs. Kornola for her time in Bogota High School. I had her when I was there as well.
Great, excellent, thank you, John. All right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Another new item, number two twenty-three, twenty-one, thirteen, approval of the CARES after-school reading program teacher. May I have a motion on that, please?
Miranda.
Frank, thank you, second.
Second, Chavez.
I got Eileen first, I think. Any discussion? Questions? If none, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, two twenty-three, twenty-one, fourteen through two twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-three. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you, second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Ervin, roll call, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Finishing on the agenda, buildings and grounds, agenda item two twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-four. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Eileen. Any discussion?
Yes, I actually have a.
Oh, my goodness, go ahead. Who's first?
Go ahead, Frank, go ahead.
Okay, and I don't know, obviously, if I'm, I don't know what old or broken means in the computer category, but I was asking if there, is there ever an opportunity or possibility that these older computers, and again, I don't know their age, but if they were cleared up, was there a possibility that we can share them with our community? Because as you know, some people simply can't afford electronics. Again, I don't know how old they are, I don't know what the rules are, but it's just something I saw, and I figured if someone young can learn the basics, that's all.
I got Frank on the call, so he's our computer guru, but for the most part, there's, they do not work at all, and they're, they're just taking up space at this point in time. So, we usually use everything up until it does not work anymore, so unless I'm wrong, Frank, but I, I think for the most part, we always ask those questions, and we have repurposed a lot of different things when we can. But these, these are to the point where they do not work anymore, and they can't be even parts. Like Frank takes them apart and does different things with them when he can.
Thank you, Kennedy.
Anyone else?
I, I had a question. Is there a cost to this disposal? Because I noticed on this list, there are some actual devices. Is there a cost? Are we wiping these drives, or we're just throwing them in the garbage?
Ervin, it does cost to have to recycle them, correct?
We are recycling them, there is no cost on us.
Thank you.
And, and I do believe they are wiped clean of any important data.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion? Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes. And moving on to the addendum, item number two twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-five, which is the solar power agreement, purchase agreement, Mr. Kennedy mentioned in the beginning. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Second, Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. Ervin, roll call, please?
Mrs. Alvers?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanbrun?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to committee reports. Mr. Kennedy, is our student congressor up with us this evening?
I don't know if I see her on here anyway, she tends to raise her hand.
I don't see her. All right, then if we could move on to other committee reports, B C?
Sure. So, the negotiation committee met with the administrators. They presented us an updated version of the previously presented PowerPoint presentation that I guess they presented during last year. They presented that to us, we reviewed it, we went through it. Subsequently, a conversation was had with Ervin and Mr. Kennedy just to iron out some questions. And we are at the point where we will convene again as a committee, and then again with the administrators, and hopefully put this to bed quickly.
Thank you. Also, if I could, does anyone else have a committee report? If not, I could just report from the school boards, from the, the state meetings that I attend. They were, their discussion was on yesterday. They discussed the inter-scholastic athletics that are, you know, opening up throughout the districts. Some districts are talking about coaches that weren't allowed to coach if they weren't in school or if they were only teaching remotely, so it's interesting. Everything is done differently all across the state. Where different districts stood with instructions. Some of them are completely virtual, some of them are in-house, some of them are hybrid, like we are. Some, very few have lunch, literally, I think maybe less than a handful have lunch. So, it literally is being handled from district to district. And also, they mentioned the, the unsung heroes program, which is a really nice program. They started a few years ago. It's for a senior in high school who otherwise might not be recognized for being, say, you know, the valedictorian or the football, you know, captain or something like that. It's sort of one of the quieter students in the class. So, that'll be coming to the superintendent's office and go through the principal for someone to be recommended. In the past, they've done an actual celebration with those students and their administrator, but because of COVID, they won't be doing that. So, they'll be making students' names have to be submitted by mid-March, and they're going to do a video with all of the children and rec, the students, excuse me, and recognize. So, it's a, it's a really nice program. It's, it's a little accolade for some kids that otherwise might be working really hard, overcoming an obstacle or, or volunteering or doing a really wonderful project, but don't necessarily get in the highlights like some others might. That's all I have on that. Any, then, under old business? No, any new business?
I would like to ask a question, please.
Sure, Amanda.
Um, I know this is like a complete shot in the dark. Is there any possibility that one of the schools, one of our gymnasiums or something, could, could host the vaccines so that we could start a vaccination program for our teachers, administrators and staff? Is that something that they're offering to school districts to, to apply for?
Uh, they haven't offered yet. We have a county meeting tomorrow, and on the agenda is vaccines. We did talk about that. I've had a couple of superintendent meetings where it was discussed, but the question is, who's giving out the vaccines, who's storing them? There's a lot of, there's a lot that's going into it right now. But from my understanding, there's not a lot of vaccines to go out, so it would be great. They said, all right, here's Bogota Education, you have two hundred vaccines, here you go, and we were able to give them out. That would be helpful, but from my understanding, that's not how it's working right now. And to be honest with you, there seems to be no real plan on how it's working. I have friends who've gotten it because they happen to know someone. I have my mother, who, you know, who is older and, and has cancer and can't get it. So, there seems to be no rhyme or reason why some people have it, some people are not. We're all, I think every teacher is signed up for it if they want it, and we just keep getting alerts saying, you're one B, we'll let you know when you can go. So, but I do have a county meeting tomorrow, and that's on the agenda, so I'm hoping to get more information with that.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it would be great if we could have some of the staff, yeah, maybe be trained in giving the vaccination, and then they could assist.
The only people that could give it are, are nurses.
Nurses.
Oh, there's not like a special training that you can get to just stab a needle in someone's? Does it really? I mean, I don't want to take away from any nurses at all, but I mean, I, just to help with this cause, it seems like that's something that we can handle.
I think if we had the space and we had the vaccine, we could reach out to the community. I imagined, I, I've heard of people who have tried to offer to help out. I know my daughter helps out down in her district. She's a nurse, and she's down in Hamilton, and she volunteers one day a week, twelve hours, and she goes and she just sits there and gives shots, or she takes temperatures or whatever. So, there are areas where it's being done. So, I mean, if we can offer our site at least, I think that I'd be happy to see if, you know, we could do something like that.
Yeah, I feel schools like, schools would be a great way to do it per community. I think it would be an excellent access point for everyone, like in, it would just make everything more efficient. And that's just the dispatcher in me talking, so.
We'll get you to organize it. All right, anyone else on to new business? No, all right, then if we could move on to hearing of the public, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, Ortega.
I've got John and Eileen in there, okay? Any discussion? All righty, if anyone has any questions of, of any nature, we have the question still in the Q and A. When can we expect schools to open up more? I think you've kind of answered that. If the person who asked the question has another question for that. Otherwise, I don't see any hands.
Someone else had.
I think Miss Connolly, Miss Connolly had her hand up.
Connie's up, yes, Connie?
I see Connie.
Yes.
Connie?
Just going on what you guys were talking about now, I just wanted to let you know. One of the things I would consider, tell you is that maybe you can get together with our O E M department, and they can help you out with that, because I know CARES Act just opened up again today. So, if you're doing something like that, that may be something that they could try to help you out with. So, Rob or, or Lucky could help you out with that. The other thing I just wanted to also mention, I know Mrs. McHale called me up. She is in there, she also worked for the, for the borough or for the district, and so she also had offered to be, you know, was able to give the shots as well. Just a thought, but I would definitely get in contact with Rob and see what, if you can work out something together with the borough.
Thanks, Connie.
Just with that, with Rob though, I have been, I do speak to him or email or text him like weekly. So we are in touch. So anything that he sees, he sends to me when he can.
All right, and if Linda Matraskis is in the Q and A and she said, Amanda, excellent idea. I'm an RN and would volunteer to administer vaccine voluntarily. So there we go. We have one volunteer. And Mrs. McHale. So we're on a roll. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions? No? We have a motion to close citizens' comments, please.
Motion.
BC, second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Any other discussion this evening on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay. All righty, we'll be going into executive session. Mr. Kennedy, anything else before we do that?
No, just a reminder to make sure you log out of this Zoom and go to your Google Meet invite to go to executive. And then we got to log back into this one more time.
All righty, so with that. Whereas C23, excuse me, 231 PL 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet in executive or private session under certain limited circumstances. And whereas said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive private session or private session, now therefore be resolved by the Bogota Board of Education that it does hereby determine that it is necessary to meet in an executive session on February 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM to discuss matters involving litigation and attorney-client privilege, that the matter discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you, Frank. Second?
Chavez.
Thank you, Jose. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, about how long do you think?
He's muted.
15, 20 minutes?
15, 20 minutes? All righty, action, right, action may be taken upon return. All righty, so I need everyone to log out of this meeting and check into your other one. Thank you.
Hi, Nathania. Frank?
Yes.
Nathania, I wanted to bring up really quick, in closed session, I think headphones would probably be the best recommendation, right? Just because I see some people...
I couldn't, I couldn't with the headphones.
No, I know, but I noticed you're in the office, but I saw people without headphones, without headphones plugged on, talking to someone, laughing while we're in closed session. I think that's a complete violation, and I think you should probably state that just for protection, you know? It's like taking notes, right, and taking your notebook and leaving it in the middle of...
All right, we're public, we're public.
Okay.
Frank, we're public. All right, when everyone's back in? All right, I see 13, so we should all be here? All right, may I have a motion to reconvene, please?
Motion, Miranda.
Thank you, second?
Second, Adalia.
Thank you, Adalia, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chavez never made it back, I don't know if that matters.
Oh, I thought he was back, I had everybody.
There he is.
There he is. All right, we're just reconvening, Jose. All in favor, I'm sorry. Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, Mr. Kennedy, did you have any other comments before we adjourn?
Have a good night.
Good one. All right, motion to adjourn?
Miranda.
Thank you, thank you. All righty, discussion, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.